You all put a lot of time and effort into the work that you do on the school board. And just wanted to give a small token of my appreciation for your work. Just a little certificate from the Vermont School Boards Association for your efforts. So, thank you all.
And while you have that topic on the table, I'm going to circulate these letters that were written by some middle school students. Appreciation letters from Emily Kimball's classroom.
I do have, I'm going to need just signatures. I never asked you to sign the resolution of appreciation for Beth after the November meeting. So, there are three copies in here. If I can just send it around and have all the board members sign this, that would be great. I have a nothing under student, nothing else under personnel. I'll give you a negotiations update. So, we have started doing some work with the teachers' union. We have a subgroup that was tasked with going through our master agreement and looking at Sheldon's master agreement. And seeing if there are any common language items that we could agree upon or things that were close that we could agree upon. So, we started doing that work last week, the middle of last week. It went pretty well. We have our first official negotiation with the teachers' union with the full group from both the board's side and from the teacher's side on January 30th. And after that, we have two others scheduled between February. And we're going to be moving that last one into early March. Any questions on negotiations? Okay, so I thought I knew what I was going to talk to you about under the Act 46 update when I wrote this board report about a week ago. It's completely changed. So, I'll just talk about what we know. And what we know is that there's some uncertainty. There were five bills that were proposed in the legislature last week. There were five bills that were proposed on Wednesday. One of those bills has gotten quite a lot of press. And it is in regard to extending the deadline for forced mergers in Act 46. From the operational date being July 1, 2019, to July 1, 2020. So, I'm not sure what's going to happen with that bill. It looks like they do have quite a bit of support for that. There are other bills that are there as well. Some, one of them, I think, was about encouraging the legislature to make a decision about if communities voted on, if they had a 706B study that put a proposal in front of their voters and the voters voted no. They want them to make it so that the state board can't forcibly merge those. That's how I understand that one. I think there were three that were related to deadline. And one was related to funding. So, technical support money. I think it was transition support money is what it was talking about. So, those are the bills. We don't know what will pass and what won't pass. So, right now, we're still under the same order that we were on the last time I spoke with you. And that is that we can't warn a local budget, a single district local budget. The only order we still have at this moment is the state board order from November. So, right now, we're still on track to have the organizational meeting for your side of the USD on February 19th. Could that change? Yes, we're not certain. So, I'm not doing a lot of work to publicize that. I'm kind of looking at the legislature to see how quickly will this change happen, if it's going to happen. I don't want to start doing a lot of advertising that we're going to have this meeting on the 19th. It will further serve to confuse community members if I do that. So, kind of waiting at this moment to just see what's going to actually play out.
So, I have a February 7th meeting in my calendar. That one I can delete, right? Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to check.
That was the second attempt at having that meeting.
That's what I thought. But before I hit delete, I'm a little confused about all this. I wanted to check.
I don't know why you would be confused by it. Any questions from board members? I know that you've been receiving lots of stuff about all of this. I didn't know if you had any questions.
No, just we've been, I don't know about anybody else, but we've been getting emails flying back and forth. And it's like, they're contradict, I mean, one says one thing, one says another. So, I was just like, you know, I don't know where we are right now, so.
But we're going to go by what you just said.
Yeah, but no, that is.
I think that, I'm going to be careful how I say this. Morgan and I work for you. We seek legal guidance to determine the intent of the law from Pietro. You are in, you are parties in litigation associated with Act 46. And you have representation about that litigation. I believe that the legal guidance that you're receiving should be about the litigation. I'm not sure if that's where it's coming from because I don't get the same emails from you. But if you're getting legal advice about other things, it really should be by independent legal counsel, which, you know, we certainly could help Andy to access. Not necessarily the lawyer who's representing you in the lawsuit. And if you don't want it to be just Pietro, you could, the board could, if you have confusions, also enter into an agreement with an outside legal counsel that would represent only you. I know you're in a confusing place because I know you're getting all kinds of information. And we're trying to navigate the information that we're receiving and what we know about the law. And we know that that sometimes is conflicting with what you're hearing on the other side. So, you can always decide to do that. I know some of our boards have had no problem using guidance from Pietro. He's someone who's served our organizations for many years. He's represented single districts. He's represented the supervisory union. He's certainly our go-to person when we have a question about interpretation of law. But there have been other districts who have wanted to also consult with an independent counsel. That's not necessarily going through us. So, you have that opportunity if you choose to. Okay? Any other questions? Okay. So, I want to talk about the principal search for Richford Elementary. So, there are some decisions I need this board to make tonight. I've done some drafting of a timeline in a process that I want to go over with you. So, I think I have a, I'll pass those around. We'll start right at the top. So, the first part is a timeline. I'll let you go through and look at that first, the first two pages, really. And this is negotiable. If those dates aren't dates that you were imagining, we can work on it together. So, I put feelers out to members of the staff. I asked Beth to reach out to see if there was a parent or two that were interested in serving on the committee. And two of you from the board said that you'd be interested in serving on the committee. So, on the next page, you can see a draft of who was on that hiring committee. But I'm also, I'm looking for guidance from you. Is that what you imagined for the screening committee? We're going to go through quickly and then we'll come back and take it one thing at a time. I'm just showing you the tool that I'm going to give to the screening committee. So, as they review all of the candidates that they're looking at, they're going to weigh in on whether or not they think they should be interviewed or not. And we'll use the same tool to tally how many members of the committee felt one way or the other. There's a proposed principal search. This is for the screening committee, a schedule of interviews for the seventh. And then they're going to be asked to rank order at least their top three. And then weed out any that they don't think would be a match for Richford and why. And they're going to give that feedback to you as board members. Okay? And then there will be a process of vetting. All of the members, all of the candidates who make it to the final round will go through a pretty thorough vetting process before you get to see them in the interview. This is just a tool I'm going to use for reference checks. So, I wanted you to see that piece. And then I was thinking of doing a community forum, hosting a community forum the same night as your board meeting so that members of your community have the opportunity to meet the candidate. This is a form similar to a form we used in a couple of other principal searches recently. There's nothing major on it other than which candidate do you think would be the best match? And asking them to make a comment. So, my thinking is that you have a board meeting on February 18th. So, I tried to start with that as the end goal. I told you in December that I would try to get you to a place where you could see those finalists in February. So, that would be the final round of interviews, your community forum. And then I tried to backfill the process from there. Okay? So, if we go right back to the first page. The process, the first step is tonight, reviewing potential committee members who have expressed interest. And that's a couple of pages in. Do you have any concerns with that committee? Is it representative enough? Do you want me to look for additional members of your community that fill another role that I haven't thought of?
Why are they listed twice?
What's that? I was going to cut them off and then I, I didn't print it in advance.
I kept saying, well, maybe more.
I was trying to save paper because it wasn't a lot.
I just said to Morgan, why is it printed twice?
Should have told you that. Are we missing any stakeholders that you want at the table?
Should there be another parent? I don't know.
So, I will, I'll lean on Beth. She knows the parents. Beth, Beth.
I thought of somebody else. I thought of a couple of people, but I asked you if you wanted me to keep going or stop at one.
I was thinking one, but if you want two, that's fine. So, I'll ask you to try to get another parent that's interested in doing it. So, we'll add a parent there.
Have you already reached out to the one I have listed here?
No.
Okay.
I haven't done anything because I wanted the board's guidance first. Then, are you good with how we have laid out getting the stakeholder feedback? Both from the community and from your selection committee? You're going to get the feedback in the format like this, strengths, rank order, strengths, concerns. And identifying of the committee members, how many had this candidate as their top choice? How many had that candidate as their top choice? And then this is how you're going to get reference check information back. You'll get a summary that'll look something like that. Reasonable? Okay. So, what that means is Wednesday, I'm going to tell Jamie to close school spring, close the add-on school spring. I'm going to contact all of the people on that committee tomorrow to let them know that we're going to get started and let them know we're going to have our first meeting. Doesn't give them much notice. But we'll be on Thursday to review who all of the candidates are. We'll make sure that they know how to get on school spring and they can take a look at everything that they need to look at. At that first meeting, they'll start drafting what they want their interview questions to be. We'll send them off. They'll go home, review applications. I will review with them before they leave. All the expectation of confidentiality and not talking about things that come up in the interview process outside of that interview room. The screening committee will come back a week later, ready to discuss the candidates and decide who they want to bring forward to an interview round. And then they'll finalize those questions. On February 7th, a week after that, they will have their interviews. And they'll forward that rank orders list to all of you. On the week of February 8th through the 14th, we have a couple of board members, Pam and Kevin, who said they would be interested in serving on the committee. There may be some board members, if you have a candidate from another community, I may ask you to do some reference checking as well. So, I'll do reference checking and I'll ask you to do reference checking during that week. If there is a candidate that is going into the final round that is a leader in another school, I was thinking that Beth and either myself or one of you could go do a site visit. It doesn't have to be me. I would really like it to be Beth, though. And then on the 18th, it would be the Richford Board, Beth and myself, who would host that community forum from 4:30 to 5:30. I don't know how you feel about, do you feel like you need to be in there for the community forum? Or could we set it up, have the candidates in there, have community members mulling around, getting to know them a little while you do your board business? And then what I was planning is to ask someone from the central office to come to that meeting that night and take all of the survey information from community members and kind of summarize it. Put it together, put the tallies together for you and put the threads of the comments together for your review.
I would think we probably want some board members probably present just for representation.
It'd have to be two of the ones that were on it though, right?
Doesn't have to be.
So, visibility more than, you know, I think that'd be a good idea.
Then this begs the question, do we really want to do this on the night of our board meeting? Or do we want to do this on a different night?
I would say do it on a different night. It's a lot of, it's a lot in one day.
So, can we look? Because Morgan and I have Bakersfield right after this board. And I was planning to send him to Bakersfield that night and not go myself. If we're going to change it, that works too.
And then I can't meet the 31st.
Okay, but that's not an interview round?
Right.
So, you could send your feedback.
Okay.
So.
What do you envision the community forum to be like, an hour, like what?
So, I'll tell you how it was in Berkshire. The board did not go in. They had, Jody Ballencourt was the central office person that went in. She just kind of served as a hostess. So, people came in through the gym entrance. She welcomed them. She said, here are the feedback forms and let them know. There was a candidate on one side of the gym and a candidate on another side of the gym. And it was very informal. People could just go up, introduce themselves, have a conversation with them. Or they could just kind of stand back and see how they were answering other people's questions. And the whole goal of the night was to just get a sense of, there were a lot of kids that attended as well. So, the attempt was to try to get a sense of how did they interact with the kids? How did they interact with the community members and, you know?
We did that when we interviewed the last person for the elementary school.
Was that how it was set up?
It was kind of set up like that. Wasn't it really there, right?
What do you mean?
The guy from?
Doug Cusius?
No. After him.
It's me. You mean the guy, when you guys did the interview process and nobody was enamored with any of the candidates, that one?
Yes, we did that forum where the parents could come in.
Oh, you did do that? Right, and the feedback was not, yeah, positive, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was okay, but, so.
You mean when you didn't select the person, that one, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
But the format of that?
The format was, yeah.
Were you happy with how the format was?
Yeah, I think it was fine.
I didn't remember that you did that.
So, do you remember if the board was in there?
I remember I was in and out, but I, I mean, I don't think, I remember being there, but I don't think I served any purpose other than just being there for support or being there.
I was part of the panel, so I was in it, but not everybody was there. Whoever was on the interview panel, like not your interview, whatever you call it.
The screening committee.
I was on the committee.
Yeah.
And I was there and the other people that were on it.
Yeah, okay, maybe that's why I was there.
Okay. So, if we're going to do another night, I would prefer it's the week before. Otherwise, we're going to have to go into March. So, well, we potentially might have time on the 19th. We don't know yet.
Well, what would be some negatives if we didn't have a board member at that for that? I mean, you didn't, that school didn't have anybody there, right, you said?
No, they really made it about wanting to get, give the community the opportunity to meet them and talk with them. They, the board wanted more of their written feedback. They wanted to see.
I think, so that's what's asked. Do we do surveys? Is that?
Yeah, it's that last part of your packet. That's what you got, just ask them to do. Fill it out when they leave, make some comments, throw in a box.
I mean, I'm okay with not being there, but I mean, if one person wanted to go, we could still do our.
Meeting.
Meeting, I mean, because we, you know, as long as we had a quorum.
How full, what are you going to need from them in February? Well, you don't know is the answer.
Don't know.
If we'll be doing budget or not budget. What about Thursday?
Can I ask a question about February? Because oftentimes February is spent preparing for town meetings. And what is, do we know what the role is going to be at the school meeting this year? Or is there going to be a school meeting this year? Has that been warned? Like, I know this is all Act 46 questions, but.
Well, it's going to be very different than what it has been in the past. Morgan's going to go over the warning with them tonight. And it is really only going to be to fill the board seats for this existing board. So, I know there are, I think there are two of you that are up and it's going to be that. We can't vote on a budget or anything else. Even if they come down with the decision, we don't have time to get that warned. Like build the budget, finalize it and still get a vote on town meeting. So, we know town meeting's going to be really different. So, the February meeting won't be preparation for town meeting, but it could be single district budget work if the delay happens.
Okay. I was just trying to get a picture of February.
So, there's going to have to be a separate vote down the line on a budget.
Yes, for sure. So, I mean, there's also the potential if you wanted to move your board meeting up or we can move it to Wednesday. We don't want to do it on Halloween, or not Halloween, not on Valentine's Day.
Halloween, get your mantra.
Uh, I don't know, things look pretty busy.
I don't have anything else in the evening available that week. Unless we did it on a Friday, you probably don't want to do it on a Friday, the 15th. We have two nights of board meetings that week and then a night of negotiations. So, 11, 12, and 13 are booked for us. I know you don't want to do it on the 14th. I don't want you to do it on the 14th. The 15th is a possibility.
I mean, do you think it's okay if we don't have a board member there? Or that if one person, if we wanted representation, somebody could go and then?
I mean, they said that that one she was involved in, they didn't have anyone there. I mean, and you're involved in the whole process.
Anyway, yeah.
I mean, we could also think about, if you want to change the time of your meeting a little. I don't know what your schedules are, how hard it is to get here a little bit earlier.
It's okay for me.
I can be here early after 4:00.
Okay.
I can hear her much better than you.
So, if we wanted to try to maybe get done by a little after, if we could meet at 4:00 and try to push through what we can with the goal of trying to be done by 5:00 or 5:15, it could get you in for a part of it or you could rotate through. I think you should change the location of your February board meeting, put it at the elementary school.
Right.
I should write that down. So, do you want to change it to 4:00?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
And their school, that's a holiday with their school.
Yeah, about after school program, yeah.
There, we can, there'll be a room.
Yeah.
We'll just say they can't have like the library that night or whatever.
Okay, so we'll keep the same night. We'll move it to the elementary school. We'll have to let our friends at Northwest Access know that at 4:00. Okay. Any other questions about what you have in front of you? So, I went through and I have looked for questions that would be good, those, that would be good questions for the board to ask candidates. I didn't make extra copies of these, but I'm going to email them to you. Because what I'm really looking for is one, not to get them on camera because that wouldn't be right for candidates to see them in advance. But I'm going to email these to you. I want you to look at them and give me any kind of feedback and say, you know, I like that one. I don't like that one. How about a question like this? I would love for you to do that too, Beth. And then the night of the interview, you'll have a little bit of time before your first candidate will come in where you can just finalize which ones you're going to ask as a board.
You want all or just the two people that are going to be on the board, like?
Well, you're going to be on the screening committee, but all of you will be interviewing the finalists that night. So, these questions will be about the final interview, okay? So, the committee will develop questions on whatever day, the 31st.
How many candidates do you have?
I haven't looked since last week.
Nine.
I think there are probably not nine viable candidates.
No, there are. There are not nine viable candidates.
All over the place.
That's a safe, two of them apply for every single job that I've ever had open. So, automatically knock it down to seven, at least.
There are some that are geographically pretty far away. There's been one of them that has, one has sent an email stating why. Because sometimes it's easy to look at something like that and say, you know, why would you want to come here from there? Right? And so, the person proactively sent an email out and said, please don't not look at my packet because I really am serious about moving to Vermont here is why. So, I have that for the candidates to look at. Okay? I think this is a thorough, fair process and I'm hoping that you do too. Okay. So, we need to make a decision tonight around high school choice numbers for next year. So, I'm going to ask the board to determine and announce their capacity for students who are allowed to transfer in from other schools. And then you'll also need to determine how many students you're going to allow to transfer out to other schools. So. Do you know how the resident students are in Richford? I should have asked you this in advance.
I was thinking after the last meeting, I'd just keep my mouth shut for this whole entire conversation.
It's not entirely clear in statute about how to determine that calculation. So, I'm going to just read you this part. Then, what we're going to be trying to figure out is the number of new transferring students, okay? So, it's supposed to be calculated annually and may not be fewer than 5% of your resident students enrolled in the sending high school or 10 students, whichever is less. So, it can't be less than 5% of your resident students or fewer than 10, whichever is less. The maximum total number of students that may transfer in any year is 10% of all resident high school students or 40, whichever is less. This means that a school must allow 10 new transfers each year or 5% if that is a smaller number until the total number of students participating in a public high school choice reaches a maximum limit of 40. So, we're going to be looking for your, so if you set that number at 40, what it means is there would be 10 each year, right? So, you would have like 10 in your freshman class or 10 that would be transferring in. This year, that would be your cap. 10 next year, that would be your cap. 10 the following year. If you already have more, we would, if you're already at capacity, it would be frozen. You wouldn't be allowed to let any more in until you, until some of those kids graduate. And you would have some openings that would open up. So, I don't, can you just give us some context, Beth, about how many kids have come in or are going out for this?
I believe we have one, one in and two out.
But we have, we have slots for more than that then, is that right?
Yes.
A lot. Wow.
And this is not relevant for tuitioning towns?
Yeah, this, I'm not counting kids who are tuitioned here from like Berkshire.
Non-tuition.
Right, these are non-tuition. We have one in. Right, these are non-tuition, we have one in and two out.
But is what you're talking about is a non-tuition also?
Yeah, so what I'm really talking about are kids from, say, MBU. MBU, those students are supposed to go to MBU, that's their, their union town. But under Act one twenty-nine, they can apply for high school choice. And they, if they want to come to Richmond, they can come to Richmond. You have to set a cap on how many kids could do that. So if there were Ennisburg resident students, kids who actually physically live in Ennisburg, they don't have choice. But they could apply to come here through Act one twenty-nine, high school choice.
So we have, we have an Ennisburg student, and they have two of ours. So with us, it's pretty much just Ennisburg. Uh, we did have an inquiry from BFA, but it was past the deadline, so...
It was last year?
This, this past year.
Okay. So you have a March first deadline coming up for families that are wishing to, to apply for high school choice.
That'd be for the following year.
For the following year.
So they can't come mid-year?
No, you have to do it a year in advance.
And what range do we have now? Like, what do we allow, what's our range that we, you know, like?
I'm not sure your number, I'm not sure if your number was set before.
Okay.
I think we set a number every year, right?
I...
We looked. I couldn't find it.
Oh, you couldn't find it.
But, I mean, I think that it's, you, you don't have a huge influx of people exercising this op, option. And part of it is you're right up on the border. So if you're thinking about, you know, drawing a circle around your area, you lose half of your circle to Canada. And they're not going to come down, it doesn't, doesn't work for that. So the pool that you can draw from is pretty limited. I don't think you're going to have a lot of kids geographically be able to come without transportation here.
So there are a hundred and nine residents, high school kids. And so that you guys know, the way that the money works on this is if a Richmond resident goes to Ennisburg, you get to count the kid in your ADM, which helps your tax rate. If an MBU kid comes here, you're educating the kid, but you don't get any money for it. And it would very slightly reduce the amount of tuition you are allowed to charge to the Berkshires and Montgomerys, because you're dividing it over more kids. That's not as much of an issue for, for you all as it is for Ennisburg, where more than half of their kids are tuition kids.
So, they don't pay tuition to come here, or they?
The high school choice kids don't.
High school choice doesn't.
So it's been a direct watch for Ennis, we've had one of theirs and they've had one of ours. And then, I think both of those kids are seniors, and they, we have one freshman there. So we get the ADM for that kid, even though the kid's attending Ennisburg.
So we need to figure out, like, what, what we could accommodate if, if, you know, we all of a sudden we had interest. We've got to, we have to figure out what's the maximum number, right? Do you have an idea?
And it's the same number sending in and out?
Calculating annually may not be fewer than five percent, which is five point four five students, I'm pretty sure we can round down, to five students, or ten, whichever is less. So that is annually, so that your number would be twenty. Okay, so your total would be twenty. So you can make it twenty, you can make it forty, you can make it anything in between.
Is the same number going in as coming out, same, really different?
It's less clear the other way. So, there, I feel like there, most schools are landing in a similar range for the number of kids coming in and out. I'm less worried about the impact here, because you don't have as many kids exercising it as, as I am about Ennisburg, who, actually, they have quite a lot of students who exercise that, because geographically they have that full circle to pull from. So let's first attend to, like, how many students could you take on here?
Well, I think you need to think about before you start adding staff members. Like, twenty, I think five per class would be doable. If you're doing ten per class, would, would you have to add extra sections? And, you know, it, it really depends, like, we could take kids in our sophomore class, because it's extraordinarily small. But the other classes aren't really that small, you know, compared to what we have. So I think that if we, if we said twenty, that, I mean, we could, each year you change, change the number, right? You set each number.
You said it again next February.
And how big is the freshman class this year?
Well, with, with tuition kids, it's like forty-five.
How many tuition kids?
What?
How many tuition kids did we get?
Uh, this year?
I want to say... I want to say nine or ten.
Total or per year?
I, I think he means for the freshman class?
Uh, we, on October first, we had eleven.
Eleven.
That was a huge class in Berkshire.
So if we took five and potentially had another eleven, that'd be sixteen you could potentially have.
Right.
So are you good with five per year?
Five, five.
So it would be twenty?
Five.
Okay. And then what about the number of students moving out?
What does this say?
This is the part where we have to get into the language. It, it pretty much says, like, this is, we tried to unpack it several times. And there's, interpretation is different for the different superintendents that I have spoken with. So, I'm going to, I'm going to be trying to get guidance from the agency again. It really is about looking to the agency for guidance and recommendations on how many you'll allow out.
Okay, so the going out is not have, might not have as big an impact as coming in, right? I mean, if you...
Well, it might, it depends.
Too many, yeah.
Especially while, even like sophomore class is so small, if you have too many going out.
You still get to, you still get to keep the money on those kids, but your ratios go down, you don't count them towards your ratios.
Is there still a number on going out, the five percent?
Uh, it's no, that's why it's harder to determine, because that number isn't exactly the same.
How big is the, the junior class?
Thirty-ish, thirty-five, forty, that one's big, that, that, they might be closer to forty. Senior class is thirty-three, and then that sophomore class is small. Like, twenty-ish.
So do you have a number that you would recommend, or?
Do you think it should be smaller than the, the five?
I think it should be.
Because five's everywhere around us coming in, so it's a percentage of every count.
And is that per class that we?
I think so.
Like, if we said two, it would be two per, like, if we said two, it would be two.
We have three total right now, one is at BFA.
Did I just give them that, that guidance backwards?
I don't know, I didn't look it up this time. She's just making sure she has it right.
But I just gave them that two backwards, I'm sorry.
I didn't think that we had any choice on people going out. I thought if they applied and the school accepted them, they got to go. But we, I mean, we haven't had a large number either way.
Okay, so, they talk about these in, in terms that, like, transferring students. And they, they don't use the terms that I would like them to use, like transferring in or transferring out. So, I'm interpreting this as transferring in in this section. A sending high school board may limit the number of resident students who transfer to another high school under this section in each year, provided that in no case shall it limit the potential number of new transferring students to fewer than five percent of the resident students enrolled in the sending high school as of October one.
That's the out part.
Right.
So it sounds like they're the same.
So I think the decision you just made for the in, you should make for the out. So it would be twenty total, five per year.
And that would be five per class?
That's what it sounds like.
So we could lose, like...
We could lose five students per...
Twenty kids. Which I don't think we want to do.
I don't think they have choice.
You don't have a choice.
Yeah, right, yeah.
That's the minimum, right?
That's what it sounds like. But it, it really hasn't been...
No, I think it's five, five total. Right?
Five total?
Five percent of the resident students.
Total, or per class?
So that wouldn't be five per class?
That would be right, that would be okay.
I think that sounds better than twenty.
In no case shall the total number of transferring students in any year exceed ten percent of all resident high school students, or forty students, whichever is fewer. When is our February eighteenth? So I'm, I'm going to come back to this at the end. I'm going to finish mine and then move on to Beth and Morgan. So, the next thing that I need from you is a motion for you to authorize me to send a letter to the union indicating that the board is contemplating a reduction in force. This is something that we have to do every year, in case you have a budget go down, and you have a, a need to reduce staffing in some way. I have to let the union know that we would need to contemplate a reduction to teaching staff.
I'll make the motion.
One second, a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hold. Motion carried.
Hold on, I'm done for now.
Okay. Morgan?
Uh, the only action item that I have is around the audit, which I sent out to you all by email on Thursday. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on it. And if you're ready, this meeting or next meeting, we'll want to get a motion to accept the Richford Town School District FY eighteen audit on the books.
I'll make that motion.
Just a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as opposed?
I might have the rich wording for that.
Sure, it's a motion to accept the Richford Town School District FY eighteen financial audit. And then the only other thing that I have will come up under your Board Business section.
Okay. On to you, Beth.
Are we going to, into executive session for personnel?
It sounds like we are.
I think we are.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't have it in my folder, so I'm at a loss, but that's okay, you can tell me.
Okay.
So do you want to do that now?
Yes.
Make a motion to go on as I can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Going to executive session, uh, by fifteen?
So, um, I want to celebrate that we hired a new industrial arts STEM teacher, Tom Barnum. He has experience in tech ed, blacksmithing, metal arts, and, with welding and, and carpentry. And so he, we hired him full-time on January eighth, I think, he was a long-term sub. But then Michael Horowitz resigned effective January seventh. So, we've hired him as the teacher in that position. He's great. There's a bunch of dates there. One that you might want to pay attention to is that the RES second quarter aware, award ceremony is next Friday, or this coming Friday at two. And James Clausen and Hannah Hertchabees are going to be celebrated at the State House next Monday as presidential scholars. So, I will be going to that. Another celebration, Allison Barkley, Sam Rye, and Jessica Heron, Heron have been accepted as upward-bound STEM, into the upward-bound STEM leadership program. And so they're going to be traveling to Disney World and the Kennedy Space Center during April vacation. And I think they're going to be there to see an astronaut go into outer space, yeah.
Can you go back and say those names one more time?
Yes.
The presidential ones first?
Allison Barkley.
Presidential scholars?
Uh, oh, presidential scholars are Hannah Hertchabees and James Clausen. And, we've been fortunate, each year, they have picked, you can nominate two kids, the guidance department can nominate two kids. And every year since I've been principal here, or since they started doing this, we've had two kids accepted. And not, they don't always accept two kids, but they, they have for us, so that's a celebration too. Um, so Allison Barkley, Sam Rye, and Jessica Heron are the kids that are receiving...
Allison Barkley, Sam Rye.
Sam Rye, Samantha Rye, and Jessica Heron.
And who do they go, who goes with them?
Well, they're going with the upward-bound group, we're part of the, well, it's Northern Vermont University now. Uh, but as another part of that, that's a celebration, is that they are really, they came to me and asked me if they could send Ryan Bushy to Hawaii. He left on Friday for a specialized STEM training. They're paying for everything, and they're also sending him to Disney World and to Kennedy Space Center in, during April vacation. We're paying for the sub, because they really are trying to make Richford High School a STEM school. And so we're receiving our teacher, I mean, they'll be, he will be teaching for them in the summer, but our kids get to benefit from all of that training as well. And our kids will act as, like, teacher advisors in the upward-bound program. So those three kids that are going, there are one sophomore and two juniors, will also be able to work here as teacher advisors. So, they're really putting, it's a great celebration for us. They're putting a lot of money into training our teacher, so...
And what does he teach?
He's a science teacher. But he's done, um, next year he's going to do, I think, an engineering class here. Um, he did engineering at his former school, and it's an online program. And actually, kids who get accepted into engineering programs, some of the, some of their classes are waived. And they can actually get credits for the, for the program that he does. Um, so he's going to be doing that, and he's going to be doing some STEM stuff. And if, we're going to have it on a two- or three-year rotation. So, we're really excited about that.
So the upward-bound STEM grant recipients, is that what you said?
Is what?
Upward-bound STEM grant recipients?
Mm-hmm, yes.
What's STEM?
STEM is science, technology, math, math. If, there's STEAM and arts, if, sometimes you hear STEM, and sometimes you hear STEAM. STEAM is with the arts in, integrated into it. But it's, um, so E is engineering, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Oh, I forgot, I'm sorry, I forgot something under Personnel. Under Personnel, Lisa Greco has a letter of resignation that I'll read to you. "It is with mixed emotions that I submit this letter of resignation effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. I have decided to leave my position here at the school as student assistance program counselor and school-based clinician to go into full-time private practice. This has not been an easy decision, as I have enjoyed providing services to our students for many years and value the relationships I have been able to build with both staff and students. However, this is a professional step forward for me, and one that I have worked very hard to attain. At this point in my career, I feel it is time to make this move. Although I have not had the opportunity to work with the current board members very long, I have always felt valued and supported from previous school boards during my time here. I am willing and available to assist in finding and training a qualified individual who will continue the very important work of prevention and intervention services within the school district. Thank you for your support, respectfully submitted, Lisa Leguere-Greco." So if you remember, last year was, she became board certified, or she will be board certified. But she's been working toward this, I think since I began as principal here in Richmond. here in Richford, so it's good news for her, not necessarily for us, but...
So they, do they need to accept the letter of resignation?
Usually they.
You can, yeah. Usually you put something in the minutes, especially if it's someone who's been here a long time.
Right.
Just acknowledging, maybe with regrets.
There's a motion to accept, this is...
With regret, we accept Lisa's letter of resignation.
You can't, in these situations, you can't help but be happy for the person, but sad for your organization.
Right. Thank you. I'm going to give this to you, to you, to you. That's all I have. Now, I, there are some dates there, and notice that the dates, the middle school and elementary school are aligned, but because of the new proficiency, uh, like, our, the high school marking periods and semester, they don't line up exactly, and when the reports cards go out, they don't line up exactly, but it's because of the new proficiency, um, program that we're trying this year. But the K, pre-K or K through eight, they do line up, but the high school doesn't line
I'm ready for you to come back to me, once I've got clarity.
All right, y'all set, Beth?
I'm all set.
Um, so when we had talked about the high school choice numbers, the numbers, the not, uh, fewer than 5% or 10, may not be fewer than 5% or 10, that was in regard to the number of students going out. So in terms of the number of students coming in, schools are allowed to limit the number of students who may transfer, um, and this talks about the capacity to receive. You have to determine annually your capacity to receive students, and here's where it is unclear, using a variety of criteria, although there is no numerical or percentage formula. We looked a long time for that one line the other day. So you get to determine how many kids you would have the capacity to come into your school each year, and there's no minimum or maximum for that one.
So should we stay where we originally said, or what do you think?
How many can you take in without having to hire, is the question, right?
Well, you had said that earlier, that you could do five.
Yeah.
A year with no...
Well, like, yeah, there are some years you could take more than that. But there's, sometimes, it depends on what the tipping point is, on when you have to divide out sections, and the thing to remember is you get no additional revenue. So i- it's fine if you don't have to start adding staff members, but when you have to start, have to add staff members, then you aren't getting any revenue to offset the...
Yes. And it doesn't necessarily mean that the ones that you're going to let in are all going to be freshmen.
Right.
You could, if you set your number, uh, at 20 and 5 per year, you could end up with four seniors and one sophomore.
Right.
And then that kind of changes your capacity that following year.
Right.
So you'd be able to allow nine in instead of five. Makes sense. Do you want to, you had originally said 20 for that number as well, 5 per year. Do you want to keep them both at that?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Awesome. Now I'm definitely done.
So brings us to board business.
Can I just tell them something?
I, I didn't like that.
I should have told you that, I think that, um, there is a thing on the news tonight where Richford Schools and Bakersfield School are being highlighted, some of our kids might be talking, they, um, WCAX did a thing on universal free meal.
Yeah.
Meals, and, uh, they, um, asked to come in our middle school lunch, it's, you know, our middle school is quite large, and, um, I'm like, oh, oh, great, but it went pretty well. Um, and so they interviewed a couple of kids, they ended up interviewing me briefly, they interviewed Morgan, so that is airing tonight on WCAX.
They've had little clips of you and Morgan.
I got, somebody messaged me, this said Morgan, you and Morgan were in the previews. Okay, I haven't seen it myself, no.
Anything else?
So I'm going to send around the draft warning for your annual meeting. Um, please check the dates and years, especially, um, the only business that will be on here are the election of those two, uh, board seats. I believe that it's Pam and Mandy who are up. Um, signatures are probably due next Monday.
Yeah, I think they, did you get yours in yet?
No.
No, I didn't either.
Make sure you're not running for the same seat, because we've seen that before and it doesn't work out well. Um, and also make sure that I've got your names spelled correctly, and if that is correct, you can sign it, and if not, I will, um, fix it and have Beth print another one.
So, um, when is this warning due? Next Monday?
Alan is sending the book tomorrow. Alan is sending the book as soon as we give him our report.
We waited as long as we could.
So that'll be for the book, if for some reason we get clarity in the next 48 hours and the book has gone out, in theory, we could hammer together a quickie meeting and run a budget and get it voted on. Um, I think there's no advantage in trying to move quickly when something changes on this, because we've just continually been getting burned on that.
That's what I was going to ask, it, because, you know, if something changed last minute, when was the last?
We tried to calculate out, like, how many days, how many days will it be in the House Ed Committee, how many days would it, you know, how many days would it take or something like that to actually get approved? And then how many days do you need before you can run the budget? So we've tried to look at it through the lens of, is it possible that it'll get passed quickly enough that you would know?
And you don't think so, right?
Probably not likely. It has made writing the end of a report a little tricky, because it's difficult to know what to say to your community members, um, so I'm just kind of putting a, we're going to give you updated information at town meeting, because you don't know where we'll be then.
So there won't be a school meeting, but there will be a...
There will be a school meeting.
But not...
And they can still ask you questions about the, the year that we're, uh, finishing up, but there's not going to be a budget to talk about.
Right. I'm sure there'll be lots of questions all about...
There'll be a lot of questions about why there's no budget, and I don't know, hopefully we'll have some clarity by then.
Right.
But I wouldn't hold your breath.
It's difficult to say, I don't know, but it seems to be the safest answer right now, because things are changing so quickly. Are you good on the warning?
Hi, and if you're good, we'll want a motion on the, um, in the minutes as well to approve and sign the annual meeting warning.
A motion made to approve the...
To approve and sign the annual meeting warning.
I make a motion to approve and sign the annual meeting warning.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Time for business?
It's, oh, I got it?
Got it. We just need a motion to adjourn.
You make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
One second, I have one.
All those in favor? Aye.
I.
Yes.